Almost. This time so happy. I used to be happy. We're good to get going. You all right? Start?
Yeah, we should.
Please rise for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and the free and just for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Call please.
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild here. Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Smurl.
Here. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, correspondence dated February 5th, 2025 from City Business Administration regarding city fire department budget transfer. 3B, minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting held January 9th, 2025. 3C, minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Scranton Housing Authority held January 6th, 2025. 3D, minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Scranton Housing Authority held January 13th, 2025. 3E, minutes of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority Board of Directors meeting held January 2nd, 2025. 3F, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation report reviewed January 20th, 2025.
Any comments on any of the third order items?
Yes, I would just like to add, I appreciate that we now have the meeting minutes from the Scranton Housing Authority Board. I know we had asked for that a few weeks ago, and now we do have them from the recent meetings, and I'm sure that will continue for us to regularly receive those unlike before. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Sorry. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I just had one announcement. I want to remind everybody out there that City Hall is going to be closed Monday, February 17th in observance of President's Day. However, the Department of Public Works will still be working that day, so there will be no delay in the trash pickup they will be collecting on their regular schedule.
I want to congratulate the Philadelphia Eagles winning the Super Bowl. Took us a long time until 2018, and happy it happened again. So congratulations to the Philadelphia Eagles. You got it.
Okay, the fifth annual Scranton Recreation Authority food drive at Nyog Park is this Saturday and Sunday. You can take any donations you have up to the community room between noon and 3:00 PM. They are collecting all non-perishables. And Norma, are you going to come up and give some more details?
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. And also, the Nyog Flower Show has been set for June 21st, rain or shine.
I have a quick one. So this Sunday, February 16th, at Holy Rosary Hall will be the annual youth basketball fundraiser with the Scranton Police Department versus the Scranton Fire Department. It's always a great event. Admission $6, and they'll have basket raffles and 50/50s. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Huanis.
Joan Huanis, Scranton. I've noticed this week that several pieces of legislation dealing with stormwater for project for East Mountain and the Meadow Brook project and the Dog Park. And looking at the backup, the legislative cover sheets specify financial impact to be determined. But some of these things, like the Meadow Brook project and the East Mountain Stormwater project, are part of the capital budget. So one of two things is happening. Either whoever prepared the legislative cover sheet is not checking the capital budget, or the information in the capital budget has been overtaken by events. And I'm just kind of curious, so if you have any information to clarify that as you introduce this legislation, please let us know. For example, I believe Meadow Brook project, the city is on the hook for $2.7 million. And because these address the issue of easements, I'm a little sensitive because I remember all the phone we had when we sold the sewer system. Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the sewer authority, the municipal authority that would not die because it's still chasing easements?
It is.
Since 2016, 2017. So when I see legislation and it references easements and it says financial impact to be determined, I go, say what? So any clarification would be appreciated. Next thing, I saw in the newspaper that Mayor Cognetti has decided to run for reelection. And I'm sure it had nothing to do with 20,000 pay raises given to that position, but that's neither here nor there. I also saw, she made a statement, and she's quoted in the paper, quote, "I'm excited to listen to residents about what they need and how they want Scranton to keep moving forward well." Okay, now, on December 16th, I think that was the date, I attended the town hall meeting on the Commonwealth hospitals that might have been closed or sold off. She did come to that meeting. She was very late, and I don't recall her addressing the crowd, but she eventually made it. But then, we had two other things going on. We had the brouhaha about park gardens with the Scranton Housing Authority. And I read, I read the minutes, thank you. And I noticed that Dr. Rothschild and Mr. Smurl, you attended the January 6th meeting. Thank you very much for representing the city. And January 6th, Mr. Schuster and Mr. McAndrew, you were present according to the minutes. Thank you very much. Now, my concept of a leader, be it in the military, in the civilian sector, like a mayor, is you are leading by example. You are there when your people need you. And, you know, there are two kinds of FaceTime. There's the one in the virtual world where you send out a letter or an email, or, you know, you have a little interview on one of the local news channels. Then there's the real FaceTime, what we're doing here tonight. This is FaceTime. This is when there is an issue, and she said, "I'm excited to listen to the residents about what they need." She should be sitting here or standing here. She should be at the park garden meetings for the Scranton Housing Authority. She may not need to say anything, but she should be there so that the residents can talk to her. None of this virtual reality FaceTime. She's either the mayor and she's physically available to her residents, or she's not. So it's just my two cents. That's what I'm looking for in the next mayor in January of 2026. My only other comment is it's nice to see the exterior of City Hall. It's like a striptease. I'm wondering what I'll see next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, Council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And thank you for the information about the food drive, but yes, I do have more details. And I can't believe it's been four years since I've been working with the food drive of Scranton and always Valentine's Day weekend. We've always had a great showing and with the city coming to our aid and bringing just all kinds of canned goods and things to the park. When we collect for the park, we use those donations for four small food pantries throughout the city, and most of them are with the churches and things that we give the food to once we divide it up between the four places. So as Mr. Smurl had said, it is this weekend, and Saturday, we will be there from 10:00 in the morning until 3:00. And on Sunday, we'll be there from noon to 3:00. And it's those items, like people will text me and they'll say, "What do you really need?" Well, we need those things like that peanut butter and jelly, you know, that's the biggest item that is so shelf sustainable is peanut butter and jelly, or cereals, pancakes, mix, syrup, and all kinds of canned goods, anything that we can put on the shelf and supply the food pantries with sustainable goods that they can provide to the families that come. At first, when I first started working with this, I thought it was just for the homeless, but it's not. It's for families who are making it to the end of the month cycle, for those families that might run short on money. So it's something that I've always enjoyed working with, and I'm just asking the public, you know, that, you know, to please help us out and to, because it can't be a success without the community. Unfortunately, it looks like the weather might be a little bit of a hindrance on Saturday and Sunday, but if anyone out there in the public has goods that they've bought and they want to bring up and they can't get out, I just want to give this phone number and put this out there. If you can get a pencil and paper and write this phone number down, which is 570-241-9003, and that's the telephone number to the community room, and we'll be monitoring that phone number. And some of the people that are volunteering will be glad to come and pick it up, the food from your location. And I'm sure it'll be a location that's a reasonable drive to pick it up. So I am asking for that, the support of the community. Already, the school district has been very happy to help us out. The students get their work hours in, and they bring their forms, and we sign their forms. I usually put in two hours to help us with the food drive, so we always appreciate that. So I'm looking forward to seeing folks there, and I'll be there on Saturday and Sunday as well, so looking forward to that. The second thing that I wanted to talk up and I talk about was recycling. And not our normal recycling, but once we do our shredding, it's probably that time of the year that we all started to get our tax papers together. So I started to get my tax papers together, and I had taxes back from 2015. And I'm thinking, oh my heavens, Norma, you got to get rid of these. So what do I do with them? So I had my little shredder, and I started, I could only do four pages at a time. So you can imagine how long that took me, but after I got them all shredded, I thought, now what do I do? Do I put it in the, do I put it with the trash, or do I put it with recycling? So I looked at our little schedule, I didn't see anything on there. So I made a call, the telephone number that's at the bottom of our schedule, and I did call and left a message, and I thought, oh, great, I wonder if they'll call me back before my recycling day. But I did. I got a call this morning from Debbie, and started asking her about the recyclables, and she referred me to Christopher and, what's his last name, McClatchy? And, you know, we talked on the phone, and he was excellent and provided me with the information that I needed to do with my shredding, so I'm going to share it with everyone. And I had it in the black plastic bags, it doesn't go there. You have to put it in a brown bag and put them up for your recycling with the paper. So it goes out in our red bins with the paper, so now I have to take all my shredding out of those black bags and put them into brown bags and all. But he's very, has a lot of ideas about our recycling and what he has planned for us and us, I mean, the citizens of Scranton. So it was very good working, talking with him on the phone, and I wish him the best of, both he and Debbie, were both gave me great information about our recycling here in Scranton, and they have great ideas for the future. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Norma. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. Today, I'm just going to read a letter that I put in the mail today. "Mr. President, my name is Lee Morgan, a resident of Scranton, Pennsylvania. It is my hope you will take this correspondence seriously. I have filed a complaint in the U.S. District Court of PA. This is a federal court. The judge handling the case is Judge Bloom. My contentions are that Electric City TV asked me to host a show on their public access channel, ECTV. I did multiple shows, and as these shows progressed based on a rewrite of the Home Rule Charter, the channel manager, Mark McGliaro, said that my videos would destroy the channel. He pulled a lot of support for the videos and changed the background to just a black field. I told him that what he was doing was illegal, and the federal law that created the public access channel required him to produce these videos and support them and not to control content. Both he and Chris Bolton kept asking me to stop making these videos because people didn't like them. They were taking a lot of heat from the mayor, the council, and the county commissioners who fund the channel. Mark asked me to bring a guest to the show. I asked David Bergerhoff, a prior state representative candidate, to come in on the channel and explain his candidacy and what support he received from the local Republican Party. He did that video, but ECTV refused to air it. I did another video prior to that with Frank Scavo, a person convicted and sentenced and served six months for the January 6th riot in Washington, D.C. that the Democrats call an insurrection. The Scranton Times, a local newspaper, did an article on the show. Chris Kelly, who has a column every week in this paper, demanded that ECTV remove the video from the air. Nothing in the video violated the law. Removing the video was in contradiction to the public access channel law passed by the U.S. Senate and Congress. After the video was taken down, I was locked out of the station. ECTV is funded by the city of Scranton and Lackawanna County. Both forms of government are controlled by the Democrats. It is my understanding that the federal judge hearing this case is also a Democrat who wishes to dismiss this case. The mayor of Scranton was on a vacation with the former president, Joe Biden, and was part of the Biden, Obama administration. It is even questionable where the mayor lives, or if she resides in Scranton. There is a $1.6 million franchise fee received by the city of Scranton that should be funding the channel. We need someone like the FBI or the Department of Justice or any other federally-based investigation to determine where this money is going and how the city appointed a board to run ECTV to block legislative intent of this public access channel. This channel is supposed to give freedom of speech on the public access channel, along with the ability for local residents to bring public officials and candidates onto a public platform tool, allow the residents to bring up issues, to resolve problems within their community. I would also like some form of, some arm of the federal government to investigate where the $1.6 million franchise fee goes and how much funding this public access channel has actually received from the city of Scranton. They have used their power in the city government to control speech and content and to block free speech on ECTV. I'm talking about the government. Also, I would ask Mr. President where the federal grant money was that was brought into the city and has been spent on projects. Are the projects worth the money spent? The city of Scranton transferred the South Side Sports Complex, built with Project 70 funds, to the University of Scranton for $1 million, even though Project 70 funds in the legislation said the complex could not be sold. The federal government said that the city, or the state, or any other entity could never sell that property, but the city sold it. The courts and the local elected officials are a real problem. I can't say that the judge is not honest, but I have attended public meetings for approximately 40 years, and a lot of money and grant money has been mismanaged. We need a real investigation. We had a former mayor, Bill Cartwright, sell the Scranton Sewer Authority to bolster the city's pension funds. Now the residents cannot afford their water and sewer bills, and it's a detriment to their quality of life. I'm not sure any of the money went to the pension funds. City council ignores all questions presented to them. Only the federal government can come here, get answers, give us solutions, and a hope for a future for the next generation. And on that, I'd like to say that there needs to be a reversal of the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. The power of eminent domain needs to be used to recapture that asset and also to capture the water system in the city of Scranton, because the city has the power to do that, and they should do something for the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Bob Wallace?
Evening, Council. Bob Wallace, Scranton. Mrs. Smurl, I brought in over 24,000 signed signatures on the petition for the removal of the Biden signs from the city of Scranton renaming Spruce Street the Central Scranton Expressway and removing from 81. I also brought in and presented here 450 petitions signed on behalf of Santa Fe. The mother whose son was locked up thanks to Conahan and the kids for cash and later on took his life. She's gone through emotional stress and everything, yet she wasn't allowed to even say a word here. Yet, she's with me at 400 Spruce Street here in the city of Scranton. There's been exceptions to the rules here. I've been coming here for years and years that have been made. She should have been allowed to at least give you two minutes what she had to say. That was out of respect to her. Not only is a citizen, a resident of this country and a real American, we had the obligation to let her speak. I'd like to know what your intent now is to do with the petitions that we submitted. Are you going to move forward as a council? Is someone going to make a motion here to remove those signs based on 24,000 signatures? I'd like to know if anybody's going to do that to bring back the credibility to the people in the city and take down the name of whatever you want to call Joe Biden. I think he was a coward, and he let this country down, and it's being proven every single day. I'd like to know where we're headed. Or is it going to take me in litigation, which I'm prepared to do now? I have six attorneys involved in this, and we'll know where we're going. It's up to you guys to decide, you want to spend a lot of the city money, or you want to do what's right for the people, and you got 24,000 signatures.
Mr. Wallace, I can tell you this. When I looked at the signatures, there was about two or three pages of signatures. The rest was just a box of printed names. There were no signatures associated with any of them.
They were all done off the internet. The people supported what we're doing here.
I don't think there's a judge in the world that would support those without the actual signatures on them. It was a print-off with 20-some thousand names with no signatures.
Well, we're going to have to let a judge make that decision. I can assure you that's where we're heading, and I can assure you we will suffice. Not, no question about it. The other part, I listened to the mayor talk about the pools and everything, which is an absolute joke here in the city, what we're seeing. What bothered me more with some of the things that I've seen here, City Hall closed for a snow, you had DPW, our officers had to come out, fire department, everybody had to go work, get City Hall closed, and yet you guys are all looking for a raise, which I think is a slap in the face to the people in this city that's facing a 33% tax increase thanks to Bill Gahan on the commissioner's side. You know, the other thing I'd like to really elaborate a little on is I think the medical college should be the ones buying the two hospitals here in Scranton. Even though Guy Singer owns them, and Mr. Smurl, you've been in business a long time, you know, no matter which way you could do it, you set up your corporations to separate one from the other. Separate the medical college from Guy Singer. You have state, federal funding, you have millions and millions of dollars. Look at the governor, just blew for nothing, on a lot of deadbeat positions and things that we're going to see here. Fund the medical college to take over the two hospitals, keep them here in the city of Scranton. We don't need some outsiders coming in, tell us how the hell we're going to take care of our people. You have your state, you got Rob Resnahan, you have McCormick, you got Flynn, you got all these people that have their fingertips on millions and millions of dollars to properly fund it, and not only fund it, but upgrade it so it's one of the state of the art. And we have all the doctors coming out of the medical school that could share their time between Guy Singer, those two hospitals, Lehigh Valley, and give us what we want, but stop trying to sell our asset and take on somebody else that really doesn't have any purpose here in our city anymore. And last, as I saw Mark Powell became a judge, I hope where he kept saying he believes in the rule of law. I've dealt with him, I've been through it. He only believes in the rule of law as it relates to selective enforcement, and that's something we didn't need in this city anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Ronnie Elman?
Yeah, Council, you'll have to forgive me, I got a code. I think I caught it from my dog. He's been sick. French Bulldogs don't have a nose, they got this little thing like a mini marshmallow there, and his is all runny. Anyway, recently, I proclaimed Joe Cochran has intentionally deceived Pennsylvanians on a contract with PennDOT. PennDOT is supposed to park their construction equipment on his property. His property now. The problem is what happened after Cochran purchased this little piece of land, this little pie-shaped piece of land. little pie-shaped piece of land. his little piece at the tip where the parking, where the equipment is is 31 feet long. The city, which has got four sides around his little pie-shaped property, theirs is 88 feet long. From Cochrane's little piece of property, the city goes back 213 feet. So you can figure out whose property PennDOT is using, and PennDOT doesn't pay to use Well, no one in this whole administration seems very capable of solving such a simple problem as this. That's the reason, I suppose, that consultants flourish here. That's why Scranton isn't flourishing. That's why we have a gigantic hole in the wall of taxation. And that's how developers and wealthy nonprofits are allowed to take advantage of this disgrace to the honorable position of mayor. The poor woman just isn't capable of solving necessary problems related to the position It's shattering to think of this administration going another four years. You people out there have an opportunity to have a fresh mayor in this coming year. I wish you'd take advantage of it and go vote. You know, I honestly believe the mayor and this administration are about the only ones that think that this isn't a distressed city anymore. It is a distressed city for thousands and thousands of people and property owners out there. Maybe if Mayor Page, when she comes to visit us, would go out in front of this building and talk to some of the people paying for everything, she might realize it. Maybe if she'd ever came in this building and listened to some of the comments. And if there's anyone that doubts what I'm saying, this is a city map. I took the figures completely off of it if anybody wants to see it. I always, I always try to get facts correct, you know, sometimes I haven't. people, we just need a new government here from top to bottom. Y'all like my shirt? My, my son gave it to me after someone gave it to him. He told me he wouldn't be seen dead wearing it, so that's how I got it. If you think, my mama dresses me funny. Rosie didn't see what I was wearing when I left the house, I had a coat on. I don't, I don't think she'd go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. David Dobson?
Dave Dobson, resident. I hear a lot of complaints. I do get the Scranton Times. Every week, there's four, as we used to say in the 70s and 80s, hard drug dealers rounded up off the street. There's two in the paper today. I heard about electric cars. Well, yeah, but look at the right side. You can't take them to New Jersey on vacation, which did happen several years back. People had more or less a city car, and they drove it to New Jersey, and then they were in an accident, a small accident, but anyway, I have to weigh in. You know, we had Mr. Cartwright, he was supposed to be a reformer. Everybody was there. I was up there on Kaiser Avenue, everybody was there, and everybody was glad to be getting a new mayor, and how did that work out for us? You know, we wind up in federal pen. And excuse me, that's just, I'm not in favor of changing mayors, because all too often, all you get is a bunch of good old boys out for their section of town. And if you want to know where the lap pool went at Naog, probably in that streetscape scheme, and the person that brought that in and the institution that brought the commentator in selling that deal. I don't want to be on a street without stoplights. No, no thanks, no thanks at all. And we don't need people doing the ring around the courthouse in their cars, and that's joyriding around town. Discouraged everywhere. If you get seen two or three times in West Wyoming, you get pulled over. You know, they're 44. They don't want people drag racing up and down the streets. And, okay, now, last week, we fired 18 attorney generals. Now we fired all of the prosecutors with the January 6th of 2021. And the payroll protection plan, he fired, Trump fired them. And we have people that got paychecks from Africa named Poopy Panties, Minnie Mouse, you name it, it just went on and on and on. The graph went on and on. I answered the question myself. Elon Musk is a U.S. citizen, but as far as I'm concerned, we should round him up and ship him back first and compensate him for his rocketry. And anybody that thinks that we can't even get astronauts down from the space station due to him and Boeing, but we're going to have a mission to Mars in four years, he could always volunteer for it. And by the way, we're not a sanctuary city, the neighbors, or the mayor said that. And back, years back during Bush, when we had these type of roundups, the county jails were used, and many of them weren't being compensated for months. So I don't need any higher county taxes. I'm already paying off that, the Globe Store deal and all of the purchases they made there. That's where the $18 million is at. They didn't have that money in the first place, they had a surplus, now they don't, because we went and hogwiled, and I'm sorry, but, you know, jumping back and forth between parties doesn't cut it with me. I'm interested in what your ideology is, and I don't want open primaries either, because I want people to have their side and let them compete for the election. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. That's all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address, Council?
After you. Oh. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Mitch.
Any news on the gift cards? We paid a fair sum for our lobbyist. What was the actual concrete return delivered for that money? Why are we double mailing the recycling calendar? We were told it was split for Rubicon's adjustment, and that's done. So why the double mailing and double printing costs? We put in for a gambling grant for the Naog Park Pool after public prompting to use those funds and not just let the nonprofits drink from them. This was after the administration failed to get funding and intentionally did not inform Council, saying maybe the public and nonprofits can step forward and fund it. How's that going? How's the partial grant going? Are we still short by a lot? And how is the September 2025 opening date that was stated for the pool's opening, Mr. King? You lauded at the mayor's completion date. You own it. President Smearle said we gave $15 million to Lackawanna College for a new workforce center in 2022. I think workforce centers are good if you pay a workforce reasonable wages. Having job available in the local market is critical for that. It's good to train people if there are good jobs, but it's better to do on-the-job training and create the jobs first. Workforce, career, public health, community, all nonprofit words for "give me your money." Let's look at the U of S taxes for parking lots. As they charge for parking, I would guess that's taxed as well, as the other property holdings. Last week, we touched on the $65 million to make dorms safe again and push a bond to pay Luzerne County in Wilkes-Barre. It was said that the university pays taxes. You said that A-Mark, R-Mark runs the U of S food service, and the food sold by them to students is tax-free. Why is that? Are they given wafers and go to confessional at the end of the food line? How much does R-Mark pay the city in taxes, actual payroll or right-to-work in Scranton fees? In 2023, the U of S paid $1,961 in property tax. Looking at that, the U of S takes in $275 million, and about the same for student revenue. So that's $550 million, and they need taxpayers to foot $65 million. Let's run that $275 million. $197,060 is 0.07 of $275 million, or a tax of 7 hundredths. Let's translate that into real numbers. If I owned a home worth $137,000 and paid the same, my taxes would be $98 a year. The church wants us to tithe our wealth 10% every year, so the university maybe should do the same thing to those in need in the community, while not center city in itself, to the order of $27.5 million, but that's not happening. Moving on. After repeated public prompting, this body hired a contractor to review non-tax properties. The top 15% on that list owned 85% of the non-tax properties. I don't think we need to review the entire list, but how many so far are non-compliant, and if they lack documents required by the county office, have they been returned to the tax rolls until they are provided? Last, the mayor talked in the Times about a reelection. She claimed the enhancements Scranton's historic downtown, redeveloping neighborhoods, rebuilding pools and parks, fixing stormwater and infrastructure. All of this was done by federal funding that was given to the entire United States. This was not her action, and when the community was offered input, it was taken and ignored. I don't need a mayor as an advocate, I need a mayor as a leader. Cognetti said, "I'm excited to listen to residents. That's why City Hall is closed, and we have to call 311 and leave a voicemail message." Last, Mr. McAndrew, can you take the current raise legislation for the crossing guards and introduce it for January 2026 to increase it the same one, but for $40 for next year? We might as well start the ball rolling right now. And last, this is a flag, is there a flag policy for the city of Scranton? And if so, what is it? And it's almost three years since the beginning of the Ukraine war, and I'd like to see for the third year of the Ukraine war, on the 24th, the Ukraine flag flying out front. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Virgil Argenta. First, I'd like to commend Mr. Gattens and his team on the new ceiling in the Park and Rex Community Building up at Naog. Looks great. They did a, did a great job up there, complements the walls, and it looks nice. Has anyone had the opportunity to attend any of the board meetings lately? I attended a civil service meeting, and the reason I'm asking because it seems lately that the civil service has given you their meetings of the minutes, but it's like they pick and choose on what minutes they want to give you. So as a concerned citizen, during the public comment, I asked a few questions. I asked for some qualifications or resumes for board members, and I've been asking since October of 2024. It would seem logical for anyone that would be seated on a police, fire, civil service commission board, that would, maybe they would at least have experience in that subject, considering they're voting on subjects that affect men and women's lives and their careers. I also asked questions regarding the police lateral program. When that question couldn't be answered, I asked another question regarding military preference points, only to be given an incorrect answer, where it was explained to me that a failed applicant may use military points to pass a civil service test. Well, that answer is incorrect. Civil Service states, "The calculation of the final earned ratings of each applicant who passes parts of an examination shall be calculated prior to the addition of any veteran's preference credit." So it breaks down to say, "Civil Service rules state Veterans' Preference Act, any applicant for the position of a patrol officer who qualifies shall receive an additional 10 points on top of the combined weighted written and oral examination scores provided. However, the applicant receive minimum scores necessary for passing, passing, the written and oral exam as prescribed. 10 additional veterans preference points may not be used on any other circumstances to achieve a passing score on the written or oral examination." This is the correct answer. It may be time to go back to replacing civilians on the civil service board with the best person for the board. Maybe go back to the retired police and firefighters that were on the boards, the way it was. If this isn't bad enough, take a look at the Scranton Housing Board. I've been visiting every board lately, and I continue, and I'll call out all the faults, and I'll call out the board members that are unqualified. Has anyone up there demanded the two-year-old vacancy be filled on the firemen's pension board? They come in here day in and day out, every meeting, and they beg to get that seat filled. But come election time, everybody's looking for the fire union, the policeman, DPW, or clerical, they're looking for their votes. No one should be held hostage so that the top brass gets his own way when they go back into the rank. We all know how the system works. Fill the seat for the retired firemen. On 5C, what was the purchase price for the property at Albright and Marion Street? Was this property appraised? Council, did you get to see a copy of the appraisal or the sales agreement?
It was $1.
Okay, is that for public knowledge? Can any of the public see that, and where?
Sure.
Okay. You're joking on 6A, $30 a day for crossing guards? After you have the audacity to give the mayor and yourselves a raise, the mayor $25,000, and Council $6,500, you give the crossing guards $5 on your end, $5 on the school end? Seriously, $5? The crossing guards are out in all kinds of inclement weather. They use their own vehicles, their own gas. They take abuse from the new breed of city residents, and they repair their own equipment. You people should be ashamed of yourself. They deserve more than the pittance that you gave them. Do we have a dollar amount on the city, on how much the city gives Neighborhood Works in grants or funding? Where do those funds come from? What is the relationship with the city administration and the Neighborhood Works Director? How much input does the Neighborhood Works Director have on the partnership project between both entities? And is the Neighborhood Works Director also part of the city planning committee? And is the Neighborhood Works Director also part of the city planning commission? What other boards is he on that we don't know about? Is there a conflict of interest with the Neighborhood Works Director and the city of Scranton? And is it even politically correct? You know where I'm coming from. Have a good night.
Good evening, council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Two things before I get started. When will the ARPA expense link be available on the city website? It's a federal requirement. When is the next on-house commission meeting? 2025 is a critical year for growth in Scranton. Our mayor will continue to promote progress. When was she in this expansion team other than ignoring the issues and getting sued? Where was she? 2026, the shallow pool will be open at Naog. Deep pool, nonexistent. She's been careless with the truth. Tonight, I will talk about what I think the first 100 days of an administration for the good people of Scranton will look like. These are not in any order simply because there are so many things of importance. The Scranton Sewer Authority, sale of their most important valued asset was sold for under scrutiny on so many levels. Over 50 attorneys, $3.1 million. So many questions remain. In 2026, it will be time to open these boxes, files, computers, and a criminal investigation if so warranted. There were so many strings with people being paid for a whole bunch of doing nothing. My only strength would be the good people of Scranton, always putting me and pushing me in the right direction. Street formerly known as Spruce, five council members decided during COVID to change the name, one of the streets, their most historical district in downtown Scranton. I will leave that up to the voters in Scranton to decide. The name should remain or be changed back to Spruce Street. My goal will be to place that on the May 2026 ballot. The voters decide those five chairs made the right choice. ABC, authorities, boards, commissions, they don't need to have qualified individuals in total transparency. Each one needs to be televised live on ECTV. Our current mayor has packed these important seats with those who she thinks will gain her votes. Studies, consultants will become a thing of the past unless guided and obligated by a grant obligation. If you need an outside party to study something or need a consultant for advice, this job is not for you. Someone needs to be present to make the right decisions with a winning team. Currently working on that team. Currently, we are left with who when it comes to who directs our different departments. They will be replaced with the who's who of their craft. Each one would be a resident of Scranton. No waivers will be required. No more than nine weeks off for council. August is a critical month for the children as they head back to school. Their safety is critical. Mediocre crickets will become a thing of the past, and I will be present at as many council meetings available to everyone that are 52 weeks in a year. And a raise for each of those chairs. Need to earn them. Those chairs will earn the worth with caring and competent individuals who hate crickets, too. I mentioned the roads, our infrastructure. We have paved, cut inspectors, and an engineer. We need them in-house. We will hold our utilities responsible for their work and ensure that they're properly sealed. We will get a list of bus stops from the school district and colts. Crosswalks, proper street lines, invisible signs are important. We will also treat our roads with tar to prevent breakdown. Deferring these costs are very important. I also request lists of those within city limits who own property and pay tax for only the land with a structure present. There's no statute of limitations. City will go back to the date of the completed construction and collect what's owed. So-called nonprofits will pay their fair share, too. University of Scranton is getting away, and $200,000 a year from them is not enough. We also look at the parcels that are retained by the city and looking at their marketability to be sold. Police testing will be switched back to the former testing that was in place, like the state police. Many of our veterans took those tests, and they're the backbone of our brave Scranton Police Department. We miss out on excellent quality of employees. Morale will be way back up, and change is coming to our Scranton Police Department. Our bids will be accepted and approved by the lowest and most responsible bidder. Everyone will know what's going on for each bid. And I will hold a press conference every Wednesday morning on ECTV. Enough of administration after administration trying to dim our lights. We're the electric city. In 2026, we will once again shine brightly. We'll remove the extra set of doors. Scranton will once be open for business. As an independent, I must sit back before I announce. I'll be honored to meet so many people throughout the process. I also look forward to working hard daily for the good people of Scranton, because change is coming, and we will make Scranton great again. Good evening, council.
Good evening. Marie Schumacher from the East Mountain section of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Our mayor has stated that the city would get revenue if we purchased the Serenthe Park. We purchased the Serenthe Park. Now, when are we going to start getting revenue?
This administration did not purchase the Serenthe Center. It was purchased prior to this administration.
We still own it. What are we doing with it?
Well, the police department is there now.
The city also made changes for Engine, where Engine 15 was. So there's, of course, also an apartment when they had to be ready to go onto the Engine 15. What are we getting for revenue for that apartment?
What apartment, Marie? In Engine 15? There is no apartment up there.
Uh-huh.
No, I was in the building recently. There is no apartment up there.
What is on the second floor?
It was an office space. That's where the firemen stayed, and then the police department used it for office space, and now it's street cats.
On the second floor?
Well, I don't know if they have an office up there or whatever, but I know that's who has it now.
Well, then we should use it, get somebody else to rent it. Be good to have seen some revenue. Thank you.
Hi, Nick Little, Scranton. I talked to God. I thought he would understand. He says, "Sit by me. I'll be your guiding hand." It's been very cold out. I'm still pissed about last year's Super Bowl when it was freezing out, and the NAPA nonprofit who ran the only government-subsidized shelter for citizens was unmanned from 7:00 PM when it was supposed to open, and it didn't open until like 10:30 at night because of the Super Bowl. I'm pissed that no one in the Scranton city government has questioned the Scranton Police Department, who someone in the Lackawanna County Health and Human Services required a police incident report from the police department here to supposedly remedy the billions of federal food stamp theft at the multi-interstate level. It's crazy. It's just a way of making people walk around in the cold for nothing, because they don't have a fraud department at the police department. But why is someone from the county? Does anybody know who would order that? I mean, this is Scranton, the Scranton Police Department. How can somebody from county order that to get your food stamps, you have to go to the Scranton Police Department and fill out an incident report? The corrupt powers in charge have gotten very rich, taking advantage of those least equipped to navigate the laws, policies, rules, and procedures harming them. This is the children, the elderly, and the disabled. I need to know who in the county or city government made the rule or policy in the billion-dollar food stamp debacle authorized and forced these poor people to travel to the Scranton Police Department to remedy their situation. I've had to live on powders and gone into credit card debt this last month because of that theft, and it's billions of dollars to stay alive. I mean, does anybody know? I mean, because the Scranton Police Department is a part of the community whose chief appointed by the mayor. The people at the county assistance office told me that this interstate food heist is just like credit card fraud. It's not just like credit card fraud. It's Social Security. It's a government program. Getting from the city shelter at 7:00 AM to any place of warmth is a very taxing proposition. It brought me much closer to God, and that was free. There has to be a better system here in Scranton and Lackawanna County. I'd like to know where the money came from where officers at the CIC Day Filter can offer the homeless a one-way ticket out of Lackawanna County to New York City with a promise not to return to Lackawanna County. Does anybody know where this is financed from? Doge is a big part of the news today. Organized NAPA nonprofits are protesting for their alleged rights at the newly-elected representative officers in Scranton, state senators Dave McCormick and John Federman and PA Congressman Ron Breslin. But since 2021, the deep state government has given $1 billion to the Department of Education for DEI hirings. Money for projects previously funded by George Soros is being revealed hourly to be funded by the actual public officers representing. They're giving funding for these protesters here locally. There is more than enough money to save the children and elderly and disabled nationwide, but it has been filched by the deep state globalists people right here in Scranton. Doge is auditing these government-funded agencies. For too long, these agencies have self-regulated locally, like I read in the paper today. SHA is self-regulating, you know, with a, they're going to hire a consultant. People need justice, and we need an open media. I hope that there's more clarity, that, you know, the newspapers won't report going to protests, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just two comments. For the past three years, I've sat here and listened to certain individuals accuse the mayor of not living in the city of Scranton. I've been to her home at least three times, and if she doesn't live in that house, they're doing a pretty good acting job, because there's a playroom to the left with children crawling on the floor and running around. I've seen her husband in there carrying children, and her mother. It's a fully furnished, functioning home, and the three times I've been there, the mayor lives there. I can affirm that. So enough with the nonsense that our mayor doesn't live in the city. She does. As far as the pool's concerned, we fought to have pools put in in the city. We utilized $18 million of American Rescue Plan funds to help improve parks throughout this city. Oakmont Park's done. Robinson Park is done. Naog Park has begun with the infrastructure. That's, all you have to do is drive by there to see what's happening, and I believe that they're going to do that in phases, and I believe there's going to be tennis courts, pickleball courts, and Phase 1 is going to be the zero-entry pool and splash pad, followed by the eight-lane swimming pool, which will be the following year. But that's something that not Bill King fought for. All five of us members of this council fought for to make sure that, you know, that park ends up getting pools. We can't snap our fingers and make these projects happen overnight, but there's new pool going in down at Weston Field, along with the skate park for children. There's going to be a new pool up at Connell Park, and upgrades are happening at 18 different parks throughout this city. And I agree that we were fortunate that the city of Scranton received $67 million of American Rescue Plan funds. But I will tell you this. We're not the only city that received that funding, but I believe that we utilize that funding properly, because we put $23 million into stormwater remediation. We put $18 million into our neighborhood parks. And a lot of the funding, what we continued to do was to continue to apply for grants over the last several years, and we were very fortunate to receive a lot of those grants, and we were able to use some of the funding for matching. And I would venture to say, we've taken that $67 million and probably turned it into $77 to $80 million. So that was using funding wisely. On top of it, this council refinanced $36 million, agreed to refinance a $36 million bond that saved the taxpayers $2 million. When I got on this council, and this is my last year, we just came out of 30 years of Act 47, financially distressed city. I know people like to paint the city as being a mess, and, you know, there's all kinds of problems. Hey, there are problems. No two ways about it. There are problems in the city, and as long as we are a city, there's going to be problems. But the bottom line is, we're constantly working at chipping away at those problems and trying to make the city a better place. We now have $4 million in capital improvement funds. When I started here, we had zero. Talk about an S and P bond rating. We had none. We had no bond rating. Then we went to triple B minus. We are now triple B plus. It would have been very easy to just take that $67 million of American Rescue Plan funding and just throw it away, but I believe it was used properly. I would have liked to use certain aspects of it in different places, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I'm not the mayor, and I don't always agree with what the mayor does. But I do believe that this city is in a far better place now than it was three years ago, and I don't know anyone that can lead based on negativity and constantly complaining and being negative. That's not leadership. I don't say a whole lot up here, but I say a lot with my votes, and I've always tried to vote what I think is in the best interest of this city, and I'm all about positivity. I believe in the city of Scranton. I believe in great things are happening in the city. Once again, there's a lot of things that need to improve. No two ways about it. But the bottom line is, I think we have a great city. I think we have a wonderful city. Are there things that need to improve? Absolutely. No two ways about it. But we have made tremendous progress over the last three years, and I hope to continue to move this city forward over at least the next 10 or 11 months that I'll be here before I sail off into the sunset and just become a regular city resident and enjoy the city that I grew up in and I love. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Mr. King just said a mouthful there. I will just add to this. You know, those funds were a windfall. As he said, there was, you know, $23, $24 million put to stormwater, and then there's a lot of parks improvements that are coming. Those are things that we wouldn't have been able to do without those funds. But the one thing I take pride in here on this council is, we've controlled expenditures here for years. We've made amendments to budgets over the last few years, and it got us to a point And it got us to a point where this year there was no tax increase. Now, the county is in a different predicament. And in a year that they raised the taxes to the extent that they did, the city, on the city's end and on this council's end, was able to hold, hold on taxes, to at least do our part for the residents here. So it, it may be a, a small thing, but it was something that we were able to do this year. And it was through the hard work and the amendments that this council did with this administration's budgets that led us to that, that outcome. But that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First off, I had received a complaint. And I know that we had been getting a few of them. Maybe some people have spoken to this in the past. But some of the traffic issues and concerns along South Washington Avenue, particularly around like the 500 block, where the, the lanes are not quite clear and the speed of the traffic. We've had complaints over the past with trailers being parked on there, line of sight issues. But this, this person's concern too was particularly coming in and out of the, the Wright Center. They have ambulances coming in there and just seems to be a safety issue. And I think in the past, we might have asked for a traffic study, but I can't quite recall. So I do want to get an updated one and see, you know, how much of an issue this is. See what, you know, if there have been accidents there, and if so, how many? And if there's anything that we can do to make that part of the, the city safer.
I'll take care of it, Doctor.
Thank you. And I also wanted to bring up, I had the opportunity to meet with Justin Behrens, who is the incoming director for Keystone Mission. He was the previous director of it two years ago before he'd left the area. And now he has come back to run the organization again. And Mr. Smurl also met, met with us too, so he's, he's filled in on it. And, yeah, I think we're reassured that what happened a couple of weeks ago with the Code Blue Shelter staffing issues is not going to occur again. And that they, you know, they've got their Plan Bs and Plan Cs. And, you know, to make sure that, like, we are not without someone. So, so I certainly felt better based on our conversations about that. And maybe the direction that the mission is going to be headed in the, the future. But we did want to have him in for a caucus so he could discuss that publicly. And that's going to be in two weeks, I believe, February 25th. So I just wanted to announce that, and that's everything that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, let's revisit the gift card outcome or the information that I asked for two weeks ago. Mr. Waldenberg, if you could please reach out and see where, where that information is or the status of it.
I will, sir.
Also, I'm gonna speak to what my two colleagues just spoke to. It's easy to stand in front of that microphone and take shots at all of us. It's easy. Very easy thing to do. But, and collectively, every one of us here has the best interests in mind for the residents. And I honestly believe that. I don't agree with my colleagues half the time. I don't agree with the mayor half the time. But guess what? I vote on ninety to ninety-five percent of the legislation that comes down. The five or 10% I don't vote on is because it doesn't feel good here and I own my vote. But again, you know what? We work a lot harder than you think we do. It's easy to take shots at us. You know, and when we're off, say, say for recess, the work doesn't stop. The phone doesn't stop. The emails don't stop. So like I said, we work harder than you think we do. And it's easy to be the, you know, the quarterback, the armchair quarterback in front of the microphone. But, and it's okay. I, I mean, I have thick skin. I could take it. But I just want to stand in, next to my colleagues here and show my support. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. Mr. Waldenberg, this I received right before we came to council. It's from a person that is reaching out because she has said she has taken a bunch of other steps, but it doesn't seem to be going anywhere. Her electronic benefits transfer card, on February 11th, there was eight hundred dollars taken out of it. I, I will give you this whole thing, and she's wondering if there's anything that city council could do. Now, I, I don't know if there's anything at all we could do. Perhaps we can forward this to our, our three-state reps, Olenskada, Huiwakozaraski. Maybe they know of what's going on or who's handling this. I know we, we had this last week come in, and, but now they're sending it us. But I, I don't know of any way city council can help this unless, you know, anybody else has any idea. So I think we just, if we forward it to our state reps, maybe they know who's handling these things. I, I guess it's kind of rampant now. It's, it's going on all over the place, so.
The only thing that I, the only comment that I have on this is, Mr. Little said that he, he gave a call and they, they, you know, let him know to, to file a case or file a claim with the Scranton Police Department.
Yeah.
I, I think that's where they're going possibly with that. I mean, I, I don't know if it's gonna help us, but.
Yeah. Well, I have this, this woman's name and stuff and how much they took.
What are these, federal funds?
It's the, the, the card that they use for food and stuff.
Like a WIC card?
Yes, yeah, yeah, their, their cards. So maybe the answer is, our credit cards now have those little dots on them or whatever those things are. I, I don't know. Maybe that will be the next step to go forward. But that won't be us. That's either the federal government or.
I don't know if it's completely, if it's happened yet, but I've heard some national discussion about that, those being frozen.
Yeah, I don't know. I do know that this one said there was money missing, as other ones have.
Call the White House.
Yes. Second thing, the meeting at Scranton Miss Recreation Authority, I was at Thursday. They sent a request to have Parks and Recreation look at the platforms up at the falls up on the other side of Roaring Brook to see if they can be reconditioned or maybe they just require to be torn down. I don't believe they're used at all, but they said they're in really bad shape. So I did send that, that request in. And also, the new storage building for Parks Recreation, it should be up by the end of this week, and then the, the concrete will be poured. And then, probably two to three weeks, all of the decorations will be taken down from Naog and stored properly. We kept them up this long because it didn't make sense to take them down, put them in trailers, and then take them out and put them into the new building. So that's why you still see the decorations up there, but they are, where the building is really moving along now. Also, last week, I requested we have stop signs put in by West Scranton High School. And someone came here and said, "Why don't we just put stop signs up?" Luzern Street, from Main Avenue, all the way up to Dalton Street is a state road. We, we cannot just put stop signs up anywhere we want. State road requires, any state highway or state road, requires a, a study be done on it. So again, I don't like to play for studies, but that's the requirement to have the stop signs put there. So we will move forward with the, the study to have the stop signs put up there.
That was submitted.
Thank you. And also, all of our tax bills are being sent out now. The county has been sending all of them out, including the people that were infected, September 9th of 23 flooding. You are going to get all your tax bills. But if your property continues to be condemned and uninhabitable from, from the September 9th flooding, you have the right to seek an appeal. So the, the appeal that you would go through is Lackawanna Assessor's Office. Contact there is Patrick Tobin. I have his phone number, 570-963-6728. I will give this off to Mr. Waldenberg, perhaps put it on our website. And it's also at Lackawanna County. It's Assessor's Office, or assessors@lackawannacounty.org. And if you don't get anything anywhere with them, you could still call here, call the city. And there's another number. It's 570-504-4943. And that's Ms. Pestock. She is the one that you were dealing with all the time. But you do, I, I believe they're going to waive that again. But you do have to file an appeal, because otherwise, they're just gonna expect you to pay for it. But if you can't use the property because it's condemned or uninhabitable, I believe they're going to waive it again. So for the pro, or for the, the structure. I don't know about the, the land. I, I didn't hear anything about that yet. Also, there was an MOU put out for the playground up at, actually, the baseball field. It was the Lackawanna County Challenger Division, a program under Little League Americans Adopt Playground Program. It was awarded twenty-three thousand dollars from Department of Economic Community Development for the completion of Special Needs Clubhouse at the Harmon Field Sports Complex in South Scranton. The city is going to be the pass-through for that. We will pay the bill as it comes in or as, as they send it. The city will pay for that. But that hasn't been approved, and that is going to move forward. Also, the the letter for the city of Scranton, we did send a letter out to Rosemary Chivletta, Secretary of Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. This is from the city of Scranton and city council members, and we requested a hearing. So we did get notified back that they did receive this letter. And it is set, UGI's proposal that we, we intend to fight. And it'll be placed on record at docket number R 2024-3052716. So if you want to see that, you can go on the WWWPA or PUCPA.gov. And you put that docket number in. All the information will come up for that. And, and hopefully, they will grant us the hearing. We request it here in Scranton so that, you know, we can all attend and try to fight that, that rate increase. Also, the FEMA thing, the FEMA program that we were trying to do for the flood people, that is, it's a little bit different program. It's called a brick program, a brick grant program. That has not been cut. And I don't know, they were talking about cutting FEMA and stuff, but nothing about that program. But I, and we weren't notified anything about FEMA being cut either, so that still may not be. So hopefully, we'll get that brick grant. We'll be able to help the, the people over in that flooded area. And I believe to purchase those houses. And that is all I have right now.
5B for introduction and ordinance. Approving and authorizing the acquisition of easement agreements deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the East Mountain Stormwater and Drainage Improvements Project, Group One of Easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code, if required.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor, introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and so move.
5C for deduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to purchase the properties situated at the southwest corner of the intersection of Albright Avenue and Marion Street in the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, having a parcel identification number as noted.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm excited to see this piece of legislation and the potential for another dog park within the city. Just having the one in, in South Side over near Connell Park isn't, isn't really enough. It's nice to have a, a closer one, so I'm happy to see where this goes.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed against Council Number 56, 2025, in ordinance. Increasing crossing guard compensation to thirty dollars per day effective January 1st, 2025.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, filed against Council Number 55, 2025. Approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements, or titles of land required for permanent easements. Permanent easements and temporary easements, and for a temporary easement only, in order to complete the Meadowbrook Flood Protection Project, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the eminent domain code, if required.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 176, 2025. Approving, in accordance with Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for the University of Scranton.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, did we get any update on pilots or if there was conversation about pilots?
I did inquire. They did not make their donation yet this year.
Okay.
And I, I plan on going back, so if you'd like to, I'll even come. We'll make it maybe later today.
Okay, sounds good.
Probably a few weeks, they said, before I can get up there again.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, Resolution Number 177, 2025.
This resolution is a liquor license transfer, and it has been tabled until a public hearing can be held next week at 5:45 PM. If there is no further business at this time, I'll entertain my motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.